Stop order. I'm gonna call on Commissioner Hasty to lead us into per.
It can be awful, Tom.
You're late getting to your seat. That's.
That is. Well, let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings that you give us for health, strength, and peace. And as we enter a new year, we pray that you will be with our country, be with our city, be with our first responders, and all of our employees, that we may have a good year. Be with our aldermen, be with us as commissioners, that we will do what's right and acceptable in those sites. Be with us in all that we do. We ask in thy name. Amen.
Next up on our agenda is roll call vote, or just a roll call. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Here.
Coker.
Here.
Evans. Hardwick.
Here.
Hasty. Longmire. Martin. Silkwood. And Slattery. I believe she's absent, so we have eight present.
We have on our agenda tonight, two public hearings. The first is a request by Cages Bend Development LLC to amend the Beltsford Landing Final Development Plan. I don't believe anybody has signed up for this public hearing. If I'm mistaken, could somebody, if somebody is intended to speak on this particular public hearing? We have two public hearings tonight. I believe, Mr. Neglia, you'd signed up for the other one, so I'll. Yes. Oh, you signed up for Belsford? Okay. Okay. Well, in that case, would you come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, and give us your address, please?
Good evening, how are you? My name is Charles Neglia, I live at 102 North Dames Avenue, Gallatin. The, I'm gonna go into an offensive position about this. When the developer came to propose this development, I was all about development. I had no problem with it at all, went along with all of the suggestions, and also with the landscape appeal that they were proposing. But my defensive part of all of this is, they went in with a vision and did their homework, but they didn't consider one of the obstacles that they came across of, which is that rock natural wall that they have there. I've been, I was the second house built in Lakes of Savannah, and I've been there for a long time. We liked the peace and quiet back there before 2008 to today's, to today's date. But with the development going on, I feel that their homework was not sufficed enough to realize that where they wanna propose those two other lots behind, where they wanna propose the two new lots, did they have a plan up there? Which is unfortunately, right behind my home. And that's why I was taking this defensive end of it all. And if they just originally did their homework enough, knowing that they cannot move that rock wall, plus with the irrigation from the farmland for the last 150 years, that's why that wall was built, was to collect that pool of water going to the barn where Mr. Ted Lyons has his cattle, and that's where all of the water channeled. And now they wanna not disturb that and move those two lots that they would lose behind the, the open and green space. And that's directly behind my home. So therefore, that's why I'm taking the position, as an offense and a defense position, I'm all about development, but I wasn't all about it when they maybe did an incomplete research and development on their end, on knowing that those lots can't be built on because of the restriction and that natural rock wall. And I'm just, really just dead against having that, those two lots, 'cause I was looking forward to having that open space directly behind my home. And that's, that's really all I have to say. I mean, just dead against it, and I hope you consider that. And, you know, I'm not to throw anything else out there, but my wife battling terminal cancer, with all that banging and everything else going on is one thing, and also the, the blasting has been very much quite startling and overbearing. And we haven't seen any development of cracks or any of our drywall, but it's enough that the house shakes and the windows shake. I just wish they would have other considerations on blasting, or using just a regular ramho to break up their rock instead of blasting 150 feet away from our homes. And that's been clearly documented, because they have those, those readers on how bad the blasts are, and they record it, so I just wish they take a different position on blasting, and also please consider the fact of not having those two lots built. If they have to lose it, they should just take it on the chin and just move forward. And again, I'm all for the development, but knowing that they were gonna lose it because they can't disturb that area, they should just reconsider and just take the loss. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other speakers intend to speak on the Belsford Landing public hearing? Yes, sir.
I'm Corey Allen. I speak at 10, I live at 104 North Dames Avenue. Sorry, I wasn't signed up to speak tonight, but.
Can you state your name one more time?
Corey Allen.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm the neighbor of Charlie here. And if you look on that lot, on that diagram there, I'm at 104, I'm directly to the left, Mr. Neglia. The homes won't be right behind me, but they'll be at about, I don't know, four and five o'clock. He is right, and I agree that they didn't do their homework, and now we're just supposed to give them a pass. And you're gonna take that open space and you're gonna put it on their development, and it's gonna actually benefit their development, not the existing community around them, which is the Lakes of Savannah. And we're all for development. It's good for the city, it's good for the county, it's good for everyone involved, builders, the civilians around them. But this, what you're trying to amend here, if you vote for this, this is, I believe this could be detrimental, especially if you're in the future cases, that you're wanting to amend developments, and you're making it in the future, not just this development, but any future developments. Okay for, and a project for any person to come in and amend at any point during the middle of a development. And it's actually gonna be detrimental to the homeowners around existing people in the homes that are already in the neighborhood. Can you hear me? So, yeah, I'm definitely against this. Had we known in the original ERPD, or the ER, that this, the homes might have been behind us, yeah, we probably could have moved. Could have changed our lifestyle. We could have made decisions two years ago in a booming housing market, where interest rates were three, now it's at six and a half, and, you know, market's down, we're going into a recession, can't really sell a home, you could be down 15% on it, it affects everyone. So I'm definitely against this amendment, and I just hope you hear us, and you just know that this will have an impact on the people in the existing neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that intends to speak on the Belsford Landing public hearing? Seeing none, I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed. We have another public hearing scheduled on our subdivision regulations. And Mr. Neglia, you had signed up for that. I'm assuming that was unintentional, and you meant to speak on Belsford Landing, or did you intend to speak on both?
No, just on.
Okay, okay. I thought that was the case, I just wanted to confirm on that. So seeing nobody signed up for that, and hearing none, I'm gonna declare subdivision regulations public hearing closed as well. We will now move into our minutes from our December 6 meeting. Before doing that, though, I wanna entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. We have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood. Can I get a second, please? Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Lauren, will you call the roll on this, please?
Altizer.
Yes.
Evans. Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire. Martin. Silkwood. And Coker.
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you. And see, first up on that, we have, first up tonight, we have the consent agenda, and this is regarding, we have one item on there. Is there any questions, comments? Sorry, I'm jumping ahead of myself here on that. We'll go back to actually approval of the minutes from the December 6 meeting then on that. Can I get a motion to approve? Thank you, Commissioner Silkwood, can I get a second on that? Second, thanks, Commissioner Mark. And Lauren, will you call the roll on this one as well, please?
Altizer.
It's nine.
Evans.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire. Martin.
Yes.
Silkwood. And Coker.
Yes.
All right, that's seven and one abstention.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to the consent agenda. Sorry, I was jumping a little ahead of myself on that. We have one item on the consent agenda. Is there anything that any commissioners haven't, that wanna pull off here to discuss on this? Seeing none, I am going to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moving to accept.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Altizer, we have your motion, and a second from Commissioner Silkwood. Lauren, will you call the roll on this as well, please?
Altizer.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Silkwood. And Coker.
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you. Now, we'll go into item six on our agenda, which is the development, development plan for Beltsford Landing. Do we have a representative from the developer here to speak on this?
Jim Harrison with CSDG, and just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to stand up here and answer questions. Just wanted to point out a few things about this. This is primarily, I'm, I'm the guilty party that's identified some of these specific issues, and it was mentioned a little earlier about the wall, and some of those things, as we did construction plans, as we looked at surveys, as we discovered different things, it became apparent to us that we could do some things to enhance the development by adding and reconfiguring open space. And that's really what most of this is about. There are two lots that move from one side of the road to the other, but it means that you don't have houses sitting in front of that historic wall that's back there in the tree line, so it'll be visible from the street, it'll be open, kinda like a pocket park. One of the other things is, we've configured this in a way to preserve a lot of the existing mature trees. That was another thing, that as we got into it, the, the original plant, as previously approved, had a loop road in Phase 3 that tore out a lot of those trees, and this will help preserve those. There's also another rock wall back on the back portion of the development, kind of on the northeast side, that we have taken a couple lots out of that location too, which opens up the visibility towards that rock wall. There are some really, really nice view sheds. The other thing that we've done is look at the walking trail that's incorporated internally, and look at reconfiguring it to make a better quality, open space experience and walkable experience that we know both the residents in Belsford and the residents in Lakes of Savannah will be able to take, to take part in and, and enjoy. One of the things that we have done on the back of the two lots, for the, the people that spoke in the public hearing, is add a berm between them and the roadway. That was not part of the original plan, and put landscaping on that berm, so that they have a more consistent, essentially something to protect that backyard feel that they have in their backyards. That was something, as we were coordinating with the Lakes of Savannah and talking to them, that our home builder Creekside had coordinated directly. We have communicated with the Lakes of Savannah HOA for the past month, as we've been going through this, just receiving comments about fences that need to be replaced and things like that. Those are incorporated in with our FMDP as well. The bottom line is, what we're asking for tonight here is not asking for any change in, in lot yield, not asking for any change in the quality or the, the lot size, it is just an increase in the open space, a better located open space. The home builder is the same home builder that's doing the lots and the newer sections at the Lakes of Savannah. These are very, very nice homes, so we're just here to answer any questions. I do wanna thank, before I sit back down, or stand up, whichever y'all want me to do, answer questions or whatever, I do wanna thank the planning staff and the engineering staff at looking at these with us. We actually went out on site to look at these different areas, to make sure that we all understood these areas appropriately, and that they were gonna be a positive benefit for the neighborhood, and just make a better, a better overall development. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions. I don't know what comes next, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Harrison, I appreciate you saying, if you would, stand there on that. Grant, do you have anything?
Add from planning? Yeah, I'll try not to be redundant with the items here, but, but those three changes that are being requested by the developer, the first of which was moving the lots, the two lots, basically exchanging that with the open space, that was the one item that we looked at, that we were not comfortable doing, and that is a staff approval, just because it's, it had some implications on the, the neighborhood next to it. So generally, the other two changes that are being requested, which is the cul-de-sacs to the south and the west, I mean, sorry, the east, and then the, the change of the loop drive, that narrow loop drive over to basically a cul-de-sac, those two things are not substantial enough to be considered a, a planning commission change typically, but the other item we looked at was just because of the, the neighborhood being affected. So, and then we, one other item we need to look at is, the planning commission should determine if, if this request is substantial enough to be considered by BOMA, which is typically one of those items that are looked at with the Final Development Plan Amendment. So it's basically up to the planning commission to determine whether or not, with the motion, whether or not it should go on to, to BOMA or not.
Thank you, Grant.
Thanks.
With that, opening up the commissioners for questions, comments. Commissioner Silkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So I guess, you know, after reading the, the information in the packet, I'm gathering that what I thought was a natural rock formation, that just for whatever reason couldn't be moved, is actually a rock wall. And can, can someone, either you or someone on the staff, explain a little bit about why that can't be moved, and what the historical significance is of this? Just a little more detail about the background, because as I read this, I didn't quite gather that it wasn't a natural rock formation, that it is actually a rock wall.
Yeah, I can do that, if staff would like for me to. The front one, the one that's closer to Cages Bend Road, that is more of a mortared-together rock wall that was built back as part of the farm that was there. That's got openings in it that handles the drainage. One of the reasons that we would like to leave it there, not the only, I'm gonna start with that, 'cause I'm a civil engineer, is because it's got holes in it that actually allow the water to come through at a consistent rate. And so it helps to control and keep consistent the water that's flowing off the site to what it was before. So we would, we don't really wanna take it out, 'cause it would kinda change the flow. But the other reason is, it's a very attractive wall. And then on the backside of that, from the subdivision, with that being a pocket park, when you look, and there's a pattern book, which I think we've got, where we can open it up, if y'all hadn't seen it, but we had taken pictures, you can actually see the barns and some of the other natural features beyond that wall. So with the wall and the trees, and then the barns in the background, it just creates a really good view shed from that standpoint. And that's why our planners, looking at it, felt like it was a better place for a pocket park versus two houses. And then the, oh, I'm sorry, the other wall, this is probably not the one you're asking about, there's another wall to the east, and it's more like a fill stone placed wall that's near the back property line, but we did the same thing with it, is put a pocket park in front of it and take the homes out in that area, so that we can open that up, so that when you're walking down the sidewalk, you'll be looking at a nice lawn area, trees, and then a wall. We just felt like they were attractive features, as you're walking through the subdivision.
Okay, thank you so much, that's a good clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
Thank you, Chairman. Can you tell me a little bit about the soil in front of the wall in question? It, it sounds like it's engineered to take water and weep it out to prevent the hydrostatic pressure issues, and have you done a geotech study?
We, we had a geotechnical engineer come out and did test pits. I mean, the soils down there are very similar to what you see on the rest of the property. It's pretty much a clay mix transitioning down to rock, but it, it's very suitable for what we've used it for, for continuing to provide that detention piece, essentially letting water kinda build up, and it's been building up, quite frankly, for years. And I don't know how old that wall is, it's, it's just a guess, but I'd say it's 50 to 60 years old. It's been there for a good period of time, and, and I, we had our surveyors go down and measure the openings on it, but I actually went down there and inspected them myself and verified the measurements, just to make sure we had those consistent.
And the test, the test pits were, were wet when you?
Test pits showed topsoil, a layer of topsoil, which is pretty typical, which you see, they varied a little bit, but they were generally about six to eight inches in depth, and then you had clay beneath that, and the clay beneath that is pretty typical for what you see, trying to utilize for the bottom of a temporary, a detention basin or something like that. So it's very suitable for that.
Silty.
Yeah.
Was there a recommendation in the report for a special structure to handle the moisture?
No, there wasn't anything specific to that. That's one of the reasons I went down and looked at the wall. This, the front wall, the one that's on the screen, is suitable for that, because it's mortared and it's in good condition. The back wall, which is more of a filled stone wall, I would not try to do, I would not try to pile drainage up behind it, and it's not getting that, the back wall is not. But the front wall is actually very, very structurally sound, is a gravity wall. In fact, the backside of it, the front side of it is about, the side towards the development is about three, four feet high, and then the backside is about five to six feet high, it's a little lower on the backside.
Okay. And the last question I've got is, the area where you want to move, will that require blasting? Is that what I heard?
We, I mean, typically, in this area, we're working to try to keep utilities up out of the rock as much as we can. It is, it is requiring some limited blasting, but they'll go by straight state criteria and put the seismic detectors, and are required to do pre-blast surveys for everything that we have, but we're doing everything that we can to minimize that, and raise that out, and minimize how much blasting, if any, occurs, and it's very limited.
On a small site like that, are there alternative methods of getting the rock out that don't require blasting?
The best method is to, is to help try to design it in a way, so it's not hitting much of the rock. The, the rock is, the, the limited amount of blasting that occurs on that, that should occur on this, will just be small shots to pop out rock where they have a hard time removing them. Most of the rock, because of the way we designed the subdivision, will be removed by mechanical means, in other words, tobacco or something like that. And we're gonna do that everywhere we can, it's just that there will be occasions where we have to use some very limited blasting, but we're very cognizant that there's a neighborhood next to us, and we're gonna make sure we're in compliance with all the standards, and in compliance with standards that will protect those structures.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hasty?
I got some comments or questions about parts of the development other than the open space. Would it be better to address it at this point, or when it comes up as a preliminary plat?
I would say probably now, just because the preliminary plat is, it hinges on this FDP.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, I would say, yes, sir, I would say now, because the preliminary plat hinges on this FDP amendment, so essentially, it would.
You're saying now would be the appropriate time?
Yes, sir, yeah.
I, I've noticed we got three stubout extensions. Two of them are off the right-hand side up here on that drawing. They're offsite, and that is absolutely the best way to do a cul-de-sac for a sub, for, for an extension. Now, you got another one there, down at the lower corner. I don't know, will you pull up, pull up something other that's between lots 78 and 79? If you could bring one up. Okay. In my opinion, as a temporary cul-de-sac, that won't work, from an engineering standpoint. And I've talked to, about an engineer about it a little bit. You're building that cul-de-sac on your property, but you're building part of it that would be outside of what would be the normal 50-foot right-of-way. And those lots 78, 79, if you build that house, and you build it to the front setback line, it's gonna be sitting right on the edge of that, that radius of that turnaround. And it really kinda creates a problem. But they'll say, well, I'll move the house back, but that, in my opinion, that don't work, because what you're doing is, you're creating a house then that's gonna be offset from the front setback from other houses in the future. So that scenario doesn't work very well. And about the only, I know one way another entity has solved that issue, is they make those two lots at the bottom as unbuildable lots until such time the road is extended. And if you, and if you let them build on them, and it gets ready to be extended, who's gonna come in there and tear all that out? And who's gonna talk to those property owners and say, we're gonna tear this out of your front yard? It's, it's a scenario that just don't work very well. So I would suggest that lots 78 and 79 be designated as non-buildable sites until that particular section of roadway is extended. Now, I don't wanna do the engineers' work for him. Jim and I know each other way back, but if you look at our current subregs, and even our proposed subregs, if you stipulated that lots 80 and 77 had their access from the other road, and you only have two lots that access that, you don't have to build that turnaround. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, that's, that's correct.
I mean, if that's what the developer wants to do, I support that.
Yeah, that's what I.
And put the others, but if he stipulated that on the others, he don't have to build that turnaround there.
That's cor, that's correct, that's what I, that's what I was looking at. I, I think it could just stub out, and I might wanna check with fire, I don't, I don't
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we have any particular issue with it just stubbing because of the distance right there. There really wouldn't need to be a turnaround within that. And I might, do you agree with that, Shane?
I would be okay with leaving it to the developer and his engineer when they do a final submitter, either make those non-buildable sites or revise it so that those other two lots don't have access to the short stub road, and then he doesn't have to build that.
And we could coordinate with staff. One of the things I thought of as you were talking about it is currently we've got the temporary cul-de-sac going one direction. We could bring it back just on one side and then make one lot on one side non-buildable. But we kind of like, look at that in a little bit more detail. That would avoid the problem, what you were talking about with having to have to come back and build, tear that out and the house being further back.
Well, on one of them, but if you do an offset cul-de-sac, you still gonna have it on one side.
We, we will, and that would mean that lot would be non-buildable.
Either that or.
Or, or just knock out the road and not do the road for those and, and just keep the right-of-way there.
But I think just this scenario won't work. And one other thing, and I'm gonna make this recommendation when we talk about our subregs, all the other communities around are stipulating on a cul-de-sac or a street that's designated for future extension, expansion, extension, that there be a sign installed that says, this road will be extended in the future. Otherwise, you're gonna have people that buy those lots and somebody's gonna come back in, gonna start tearing it out and building the road. Wait a minute, my real estate agent said that was a dead end. Huh? You do that now?
I can't recall. It's, we, we, we do it in Durham Farm.
I didn't see it. Would it be in the construction manual?
Uh, I think it's in the, I want to say it's in the zoning ordinance. But typically, it would, it's one of those things, it could be zoning ordinance, subregs. But one other item while we're talking about it here, on those extensions of the cul-de-sacs, we've had this come up before as far as having an approval for a cul-de-sac that's off-site. One of the things that we did make sure on this was that there's an easement. There'll be, there'll be an easement recorded in place prior to the construction plan submittal on this for the off-site cul-de-sac. So, so that we don't have an approval for a, for a subdivision, and it's already been built, but then they can't, can't, can't put it off-site, you know? So we want to make sure that they, they have that in place prior to, prior to starting to be built out. And then it's like, you run into a situation where it's like, well, we can't build the cul-de-sac off-site because they won't let us. And so, once that easement's in place, that'll, that'll prevent that problem. But, but yeah, and it's, I think as far as the other item goes with the cul-de-sac on the south, we, we can work with that as far as whether or not it's pushed over to one side or a cul-de-sac, or, or if it's a stubout, if, you know, and, and I think that'll be a conversation to have with fire as well, just to make sure that they, everybody's on board with, with whatever solution is, is come to on that.
That sign should be stipulated somewhere in the subregs where an engineer doesn't have to hunt for that in a zoning ordinance when he's doing the design.
I think that's something we could look at, probably.
We, we agree to put that in, not to complicate things, but one thing we could agree to and would agree to is those four lots that are on that south side or that, that corner, we could turn those to face the longer street and just not have any lots facing that short stubout. And they'd be essentially the same size, and then avoid the, the challenge that you're talking about with having it, having the offset setbacks. So.
If you can do that to satisfaction staff, I'm okay.
That'd be real great. We'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Hasty. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I am going to entertain a motion to approve with all staff comments. Okay. Oh, do we need to do that first? Okay. Before we do that, need to address whether this question is substantial enough or not, that no matter what action we take tonight, that it goes before BOMA then on that. Like to have some discussion on that before we move to anything formal and vote. Does any commissioners have any questions or comments on whether this should just be done at our level here, if it should go to BOMA afterwards? Again, regardless of which way decision goes. And see Commissioner Evans.
Might as well get this started. Oh, let me ask a rhetorical question. Had these two lots been across the street in the configuration as we're looking at now, would that have stopped this plan from being approved to begin with? Rhetorical question, doesn't need an answer. The next comment is, if we decide that this is substantial enough to go to BOMA, then we give the two homeowners an opportunity to politically voice their concerns with BOMA. And maybe they'll have some success, maybe not. Then I guess another rhetorical question, would be, would we be giving the same weight to anyone else's complaints when the initial approval was given for this if the other individuals whose house backs up to the lots in the subdivision were to raise the same complaint? So the only thing that we've really done here is create expectations and then change them. And otherwise, I'm not sure that it rises to the level of BOMA.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Director Free?
Yeah, and I can explain, can expand on what Grant was talking about earlier. The other issues, they're basic issues that, you know, were not significant enough that would have come to the planning commission. We just would have handled those at the staff level. And even this particular issue is something that technically we could have handled at the staff level, but looking at it and then knowing, knowing that it was going to impact the adjacent property owners in that existing subdivision, and this is a fairly new approval over the last couple of years, we've all sat through the meetings and experienced it. Knowing that, you know, I used, I had my, had the ability to make the determination on, on, on doing it at the staff level or not, and I just didn't feel comfortable doing it. I felt like this was something that the plant, the planning commission needed to look at. And, and then also, the way we did it is, you know, we went ahead like anticipating it might go to BOMA, or it could be a significant change. And then that way, we had a public hearing, and then also we notified the adjacent property owners. So that's kind of, that's kind of what happened with that. So, you know, there'll be, there'll be times in the future, there's been in the past, but there'll be times in the future where it's something that technically we could do at the staff level, but we're just trying to make the best decision to take that responsibility that you got, that you all give us in making those determinations, to think, ah, this is one really, maybe it didn't even go all the way to BOMA, but it, it needs to go to the planning commission and let them weigh in on it, and let more people be involved in that decision. So, just want to share that.
Thank you, Director Free. Any other questions or comments from commissioners on whether this should be dealt with solely here, or if it should be, go to BOMA, again, irrespective of the decision that we make tonight? Commissioner Martin?
Thank you. Would it be an option to take those two out of what you're proposing? Because the percentage of the changes is, is very, very small.
I think we would like to keep it as part. Let me explain a little bit behind that. We've been talking to the property owners, and there wasn't a berm there before. And part of what we're doing is putting in a berm that's about six, four to six feet high. That provides a real natural, physical separation between their backyards and the roadway. Also, we're replanting trees. We've also agreed as part of this plan to take an old fence out there that was put there by the previous owner and upgrade it to a standard. And I think all those things were done essentially because the movement of those lots to make sure someone wasn't looking too closely at the back of someone else. I think they, that it goes hand in hand. We really feel like it's a good fit and it's a good, it, it's an improvement overall. So to answer that question, I, we would like to see those lots there with those improvements. We think it works better, that it's improved for the adjacent neighbors, that it's improved for, for what we're doing as well.
Mr. Hardwick?
Two comments. One, I, I think that whatever decision is made here tonight should be made here. That's what we're paid to do, so to speak, and it's, it's not a huge change. Then the question for Jim, are you saying that you will landscape, screen, berm, so that he's gonna have a barrier and won't be looking in the window of someone else's home?
That's correct. I mean, those backyards, the, essentially where those two are added, we've, we've actually got documents that we've presented to planning that shows a berm, it shows additional landscaping, so he won't be looking into someone else's back door.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? I am, we will not do this from a formal vote here, just kind of get a consensus. The consensus I'm getting, Commissioner Hardwick, I tend to agree, is this is something that should be handled here at our level, doesn't need to be kicked up to BOMA on that. That's kind of the consensus that, that seems to appear on that. This is not something we take a formal vote on. But if anybody disagrees with that, I would invite the opportunity for them to speak up now on that, just before I just make an assumption on that. So, and hearing that nobody is, this will be, we'll just kind of determine this will be handled here tonight instead of kicking up to BOMA. With that, one also, maybe what I'll propose, that we actually handle these things in two separate votes on this. The two items that, there doesn't seem to be any contention over, I want to handle that in one vote and deal with the other on these two lots, there's a separate vote on that. So with that, I will entertain a motion dealing with the first two items only on that, if somebody wants to make that.
Make it what those are.
Okay. And when you do, please define exactly what those are, so we'd have to spell this out completely.
Yeah. This, this first vote would be on the items that are not the lot switch for the open space for the two. It'd be those things in the back with the connections and kind of redoing the street configuration in the back and the increase in general open space back there.
So that's points two and three?
Everybody's being bashful on the new year, so I'll make the motion on that. The, we'll have a motion to approve items two and three with all staff comments. Can I get a second on that, please? You second that, okay. We have a motion and a second. We'll now have a roll call vote on that. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
All right, that's all eight.
Thanks. Now, we'll go back into the issue with the two lots here in this item one. Is for, ask for a motion on that. Is there any other questions or comments that want to be brought up? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve item one with all staff comments. What, is that Commissioner Evans? Okay, we have a motion and is there a second? A second, Commissioner Altizer. Lauren, will you call the roll on this, please?
Altizer?
No.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Silkwood? And Coker?
Yes.
All right, that is five and two. The motion passes.
Next item on the agenda is item seven. We have a site planned for Southern Nurseries. This has been previously deferred. Timothy is supposed to be the lead on that, but he, I believe he went home, feeling a little under the weather today. So Director Free will let you speak on to that a little bit.
Thank you, Chairman. This item is the item that had been previously deferred a couple of times on that structure that, that they had built out there. And they've come back with a change in a new, new structure that would go over that area. Everything else is stayed the same in regards to the screening of the, of the site. This would be an item that typically might go on consent agenda, but since we've already had this deferred a couple of times, and then now it's, it's changed, that's why it's, it's, it's not on the, on the consent agenda. I believe we have representatives of the owner that are here that can maybe explain some things in a little bit more detail. And that's, that's all I had from the staff's, staff's standpoint. I can answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Director Free. Gentlemen, would you all enter?
Sir, I'm Kurt Jodin with Southern Nurseries.
And I'm Terry Flat. Formerly with Southern Nurseries, I sold the company three years ago and retained ownership of the property.
Questions coming in? What color's it gonna be?
It's gonna be the color in the, in the picture there, the, the kind of white canvas coat, cover on it.
Looking through the brochures, they have all kinds of colors.
Yes, sir.
I think a more earth-toned color would be appropriate, but.
We're, we're open to different, you know, if y'all have a preference on the color, we're open to changing color.
We got staff that's good at picking out colors. I've deferred to them.
Good deal. I love it.
Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that was actually on my list of items to bring up when Commissioner Hasty mentioned was the, the color.
Sure.
I think the white just sticks out a little bit, would be hard, would show through pretty much any natural screen that you put up. So something more earth, earth-toned, I think, would be preferable.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, reading through the packet again, so you're asking for a waiver simply on the CMU block? For the concrete, the concrete block?
So thi, this type of a clear-span building goes on top of the, the, the concrete, I still call them center blocks. They're, they're large, five feet long, two and a half feet tall blocks. And so it secures itself on top of those blocks. Th, this type of building is a lot safer for the, the type of material handling that we do. You'll see that it doesn't have any cross trusses in the building, it's, it's, it's a clear-span building. So when we take our big machinery in there, when we back a dump truck up in it and they lift their bed to dump the topsoil in, there's literally hardly, you know, any risk of us hitting something that could damage the building, cause it to collapse, which is kind of what we have in there right now. So getting rid of the old building, getting something in there like this, it's a lot safer for, you know, for a, a, anyone concerned that works with us.
Commissioner Evans?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna agree with the two previous comments. That was mine first about the color. What comes to mind is the, is the Titans Temporary Blow-Up Practice Stadium down in Metro Center when you drive down the freeway, and it stands out like a sore thumb. And I really wouldn't be for a building like this down in that area otherwise, except when you guys started down there, they were running fill in there from everywhere, all over the place. It looked hideous. You were back behind it and, and it didn't, it was more industrial. It, it really didn't make a lot of difference that, what the aesthetics were because you guys are hauling holy cow. So, I, I, I really don't, if you look at the brochures, and I, I looked at them too, Charles, if you look through there, you notice that, that they build, that they make the covers, replacement covers for those kind of buildings. So that implies that there is some temporary nature to those. They look temporary, and most of the pictures and the brochures were of tractors, cattle, hay bales, and other rural uses for that kind of a building. I've got a metal Quonset hut out in my place in Westmoreland, and it fits well out there, but I certainly wouldn't build it in town and wouldn't be able to. But realizing that you've got to have a way to, to cover that stuff.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of torn about that, but, but otherwise, color-wise, I wish you would put it in a.
We're open to whatever colors.
Brown or something that, that, that kind of goes away back behind those 10-foot trees we're gonna put out in front of it.
Right.
And last time we approached. And last time we approved tents, we gave them a, a springtime deadline to pull them out.
Right, so that, it, it does, if you saw in the brochure, it is a, a fifteen year warranty on the cover. So it, it is, you know, temporary in nature, if you will, but it still has a long-term warranty on that cover. Uh, you know, uh, eventually, hopefully, we're moving to a point where we can, we're, we're doing a lot of research and engineering on, we're, we're real heavily, uh, involved in, you know, stormwater management, which is what we heard about a little bit, a little bit earlier here. And so we're trying to get to a soilless media eventually down the road. Takes several years to, you know, to develop that, but that's what we're working towards. Uh, our company has merged with other, uh, stormwater management companies here in town. Uh, erosion control, all, all sorts of different, anywhere from detention to green roofs. And so we're, you know, very heavily, you know, researching different ways to, to come up with a soilless media. Eventually, you know, this might not even be needed, you know, ten, fifteen years down the road. But it's a, it's a great dust suppressant, you know, it's gonna help us be better neighbors in the, in the area. Uh, you know, we're constantly sweeping the lot now. We purchased a sweeper last year. So we're trying to do our best to maintain the dust, still provide us with a dry product that we can work with year round. But yeah, more than, more than willing to change the color of the roof.
Yeah, let me say this about the building. So, of course, most of the, ninety percent of the buildings in the city of, commercial buildings in the city of Hendersonville are the, the pre-engineered metal buildings, which are steel structured with fixed roofs on them. The reason we don't go with that type, and this is, does, is a very unconventional building, but if you notice, most bulk materials, it's, be it salt by the state or the cities, will store bulk material in a building like this. The, the pre-engineered metal buildings have the I-beam support. And of course, we're running the large wheel loaders in here, and there's a, there's a chance that, the, not just a chance, it's probably gonna get hit. The metal, the metal poles are gonna get hit and it's gonna be damaged there. And then also, typically in the metal building, they'll have, um, a block, cement walls on them a lot of times. These, the, the type of blocks that we have here are, each one of them weigh about twenty-five hundred pounds. So if the, the machine actually hits it and moves it a quarter of an inch, it can be straightened up. And also, they are, the blocks are movable because they will move around and they have to be adjusted from time to time. So that type of building, if you notice, in bulk materials for dry storage, that's the best building to go with. Versus, yeah, it would be great if we could go with the pre-engineered metal building with the nice structured sidewalks on it, but it's just not possible for, for the type of application that we have here.
And, and I do understand that. This, it's a matter of practicality in what you're doing. It's just kind of unfortunate that things have, have changed down in there the way they have and, and, uh, I, I understand completely, but if you look at it, if it had a clear top on it, it'd be a greenhouse.
I think that could, I think, did you notice the colors that's available? Is there an earth toned color?
I believe there is. I really can't remember. We, I figured everybody might want the clean white, so I just said a white, but, so I didn't really research into all the different colors. Is there a particular one that, that the commission would like us to pursue? If I can ask that while we're here?
Yeah, proba- probably, maybe, uh, we, we can work with you on that.
Sure.
I think probably something maybe more a khaki.
Oh, like you said, earth toned, okay, sure.
That probably would, uh, would blend in better. I think green would stick out too much. So I think a khaki or a tan, something like that would be good.
Okay, sure.
I think that's probably a choice.
Commissioner Longmire?
Yeah, uh, I wanna ask what the finish is. What the finish is on the, uh, blocks that the top is attached to. And it, like, it's white now. Has it been painted or did it come that way or what?
So ours are more gray, just natural concrete gray. Uh, tho- those in the picture right there, I'm, I'm assuming they were probably painted. That came out of the brochure. But the, the, the blocks you're gonna get here in Middle Tennessee, they're just gonna be that natural concrete gray.
And that's what you would leave them as?
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, there's gonna be a buffer there, a landscape buffer between Gallatin Road and that pro- and, and the building. I believe there's a two hundred foot landscape buffer.
Yeah, so i- if you look, you know, the, the, we have the building boxed out in red right there, and it's seven hundred and fifty feet from that point up to Gallatin Road. And so you're looking, probably about roughly seventy-five feet, I believe. Seventy-five to eighty-five feet from the building is where that buffer's gonna be. Uh, and, and like we talked about with Mr. Whitten, you know, minimum ten foot in height. So, you know, we've talked about green giants, we've talked about eastern red cedars, something that can be a fast growing and, and really get that buffer.
Yeah, that's our will. So we'll work with Timothy. We've talked about different types of evergreens there. Of course, we want something that's gonna be native, that's gonna not be affected by weather conditions. Something that's gonna go, that's gonna be able to get to a really good mature size, twenty, thirty feet. We'll probably start out at around ten to twelve feet. And then we'll, we'll plant some deciduous trees with it, some large, um, canopy trees with that, along with some understory deciduous trees, but mainly we'll have, we're thinking, uh, the, the eastern red cedars. And that area will be bermed up as well. If you notice that the, uh, they're building that other property out. Rhythm is going, rhythm, the car dealership is going there, so it's, it's good timing in the fact that they're gonna be planting a buffer at the same time in that area, so we'll work with them on that. And we are staying over on our property. We're, we'll be on our property where, where we plant that buffer. And of course, rhythm will plant a buffer over there as well, so it'll be a double buffer.
Commissioner Longmire, did you have additional questions?
No, I just, um, I understand from a financial standpoint that you don't wanna do things that you don't have to do. But when you, you say, I'm gonna leave the block at the bottom, the natural concrete gray or whatever, and then you're gonna put beige or whatever at the top, and you still made a line of demarcation. And what we're looking for, I think, certainly what I'm looking for, is, uh.
We could actually, I, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, but I see where you're going with that. We could actually stain those blocks with a concrete stain, like a tan color. It's very, it wouldn't take much to do that at all. We just didn't think about that.
I just think if we could have something that was not chalked off.
That's very, very easy to do. We're just, we can, we can stain those, uh, just like you see the concrete stain. We could actually stain them and seal them, and that would take, that would knock off that, that color. Make it, make them fade away, if you would.
Yeah.
Good idea.
That's all I have, Jeff.
Commissioner Long.
Yeah, I, I might mention, it was a little confusing in the staff report because we had the old staff report in there from the items that were deferred, uh, but actually, the blocks that they're using, uh, those don't require a waiver. So I think that'll be good if you're, you can stain those, but it won't require a waiver.
Sure, okay.
What was requiring a waiver at the last time, if you remember, they had that structure that was outside of the blocks, but it didn't have any siding on it. That was, uh, that was what the waiver was gonna need to be for. Uh, but it wasn't the actual blocks themselves. They, they, in the industrial area.
Yes, sir.
They, they meet the, they meet that visual requirement. I just wanted to mention that.
And we, we felt like this building will be more attractive as well, and it'll serve the purpose.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hasty?
I'll move, we approve with all staff comments and work with the staff on the coloring.
I'll second. Either one.
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire? Martin? Silkwood? And Coker?
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up on our agenda is item eight, preliminary plats. Um, we have a preliminary plat from Bellsford Landing. This obviously piggybacks on the final development plan that we approved a little earlier this evening. Um, don't need to spend a whole lot of time on this, I wouldn't think, but Director Free, I'll turn to you on this, or actually.
This is Grant's, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, Grant, if there's anything we need to add that we didn't discuss before.
Um, no, sir, this is pretty much, uh, just the same thing. It mirrors the, uh, FDP request that was approved. And, uh, uh, there are some staff comments, just some minor things, um, that need to be labeled. And, uh, just a note about the revised construction plans that'll be necessary, but, uh, otherwise, it's, it's, uh, pretty straightforward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Grant. Um, Jim, do you have anything additional?
No, just wanted to make myself available for any questions. That's all.
Any questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve with all staff comments. Uh, we have a second from Commissioner Hasty. Uh, Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood? And Coker?
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is item nine, staff level projects that have been approved. Um, we'll turn this over to Director Free and let his give a rundown of things.
Okay, uh, yeah. There we go. Okay, uh, you can see all the, uh, staff level projects approved. There's quite a few. And then also, there's several that are pending that are in the review process, uh, now. Uh, I can answer any questions in regards to any of those. Uh, nothing of any major significance on the items, uh, that are, that are approved. Staff projects, uh, pending, um, one of those, it probably is gonna be on the agenda. Uh, come to the Planning Commission, there's items for two sixteen Sanders Ferry Assisted Living, uh, a site plan amendment. That is actually, there's something going on at the staff level at that right now, but they wanna do some things a little bit different, uh, and that's gonna take coming to the Planning Commission to request those. So, uh, we're not going to be approving the items at the staff level until the Planning Commission makes their determination on, on some requests that they, uh, that they have. Uh, other than that, I can, I can answer any questions anybody might have. Yeah, Dutch Brothers', uh, Final Plat, uh, that is over by Casa Via. Near that Casa Via restaurant, there's an outlot, and, uh, I think that's where Dutch Brothers is looking to, uh, looking to locate, and this is the plat for, for that property. We approved the, uh, site plan, I believe, some time ago. Is that the location of that? Or was it the different location? We have a couple of different coffee places. Maybe Lauren can.
Um, I believe this one's by Life Church, um, the, over there off of Indian Lake Boulevard. We haven't seen the site plan yet.
Got you. Yeah, this is, uh, this is over where Life Church, where the old movie theater was. Uh, it's gonna be to the right over there, kinda backing up, uh, to the dry cleaners and Publix. Uh, so it'll be right there in that area, and, uh, but they haven't submitted a site plan at this time. They're just, uh, dividing off that piece of property. And I got that coffee shop confused with Scooters. Uh, that, uh, that, so, yeah. Yeah, so, and I think there are actually more, there's more coffee to come, so.
And Scooter's supposed to be on the corner with Caldwell.
That's right, Caldwell and, uh, East Main Street.
Keith, the Mayfair Road reconfiguration. So that's the same plan that I saw about a month ago?
That's correct. That's the one that's right over here behind us with the Bradford Berry House. Uh, they're reconfiguring that. We're approving that at the staff level. Uh, but if you remember, the, uh, Bradford Berry House was separated by the road, and then we had the Bradford Berry House and the cemetery. Uh, with this change, it, uh, puts all of that property together, and the property that the city will end up receiving will be all intact and, uh, together, and it actually be more, more property. It's gonna be a little bit better layout, uh, too, from a, from a road configuration. So probably development behind us here, uh, I'd say probably something will come before you, probably in March. Uh, there might be a couple of projects that might, might pop up over there for site plans that come before you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, we'll go into item eleven. Just Director Free, if you'll touch on just kinda active deferrals here.
Yeah, the, uh, the one active deferral we have is, uh, Pella, Pella Window of Hendersonville, uh, over at two forty Innovation Way. This is something that has been deferred. Uh, we're hopeful that it'll be, uh, back on the agenda next month, uh, for the, uh, for the site plan.
Thank you, sir. And item twelve, we, we have for us a resolution to adopting the proposed revisions, the Hendersonville subdivision regulations. Director Free, I'll let you speak on this a little bit before we open up for any questions, comments from commissioners.
Thank you. Uh, this is a, uh, what you have before you this evening, our revisions to our existing subdivision regulations. Uh, they were last, uh, approved, uh, back in, uh, two thousand and four. And, uh, so this is kind of an update, kind of a cleanup update of, uh, of that document. Trying to do it in a similar format as we did with the zoning ordinance. Uh, and, uh, we've been working on this, uh, for about a year, uh, with, uh, we work the planning staff along with, uh, fire department and with the, uh, city engineer's office, uh, out of Public Works. And, and so you have an executive summary that kinda gives an overview of those things. Uh, this is an item that I have before you this evening, that if there, there, if there are issues or questions that anybody would have, you know, this is the first time that it's been before, uh, the Planning Commission. Uh, and, uh, we didn't hold a work session, you know, for it. Uh, so, um, certainly open to any, any questions, uh, from the, uh, from the Planning Commission uh, in regards to the proposal.
Commissioner Hasty?
I have several comments. It may be minor comments, but I think there are areas that need to be maybe looked at. Obviously, the staff has put a lot of work and a lot of time into, uh, preparing and changing these documents, you know, little things like increasing the floodplain finished floor elevation from one foot to two foot. I mean, that's good. But that's still smaller than most, a lot of communities, but I think that's good for us after having gone through the flood of two thousand and ten. You know, I think an extra foot there will be, will be okay. But I mean, a lot of little things like that, it has been a real asset. I think it's gonna make the subdivision regulations better administratively and from a design standpoint also. Yeah, but being a design engineer, you know, Harrison might oughta come up here and help me out. You know, there's a lot of li- I'm the picky guy. And, uh, little things, like, we're going to go with a six-foot grass strip everywhere, right? That's great. But when you go to table eight on a place and you got a twenty-four foot asphalt, you got a six-foot grass strip, you got a five-foot sidewalk, and a thirty-inch curb and gutter strip, it won't fit in fifty feet. So fifty-foot minimum is fine, but, you know, here it says fifty feet. We need to adjust those things or whatnot. Now, not picking on Jim's Bellefort, but on his plan, he's got a fifty-foot right of way, and he is using the thirty-inch curb and gutter section, which is traditionally the one that is being used in Hendersonville, and I think that is the one we need to use. But it's not the design detail that's in our construction manual. It's a twenty-inch. But you wanna use the thirty-inch so that when you pave it, you don't wind up with your drainage cast iron, stick it out into your asphalt. That's gonna create a problem for you in the future milling and paving, so you wanna use the thirty-inch. But on his sidewalk, he only goes to a five and a half foot sidewalk. And that's good, 'cause he had to do that to fit it in his fifty feet. So he got it all in a fifty feet, and surveyors will tell you that they can survey an exact line. And construction guys on roadwork, I can assure you, the back of that curb is not a straight line. So you're gonna wind up places where the sidewalk is gonna be outside of the right of way, and when you come back and you start putting monuments, pins in, they're gonna be in the sidewalk. And that may not be all bad, but the only problem is, we got a sidewalk that's outside of the right of one. But just like in Bellefort, he's got a twenty-foot public utility and drainage easement, but it doesn't say anything about a pedestrian easement. So we might could cover ourselves with that sidewalk. So we might could cover ourselves with that sidewalk that's outside the right-of-way if we make that twenty-foot easement and incorporate a pedestrian. We don't, I don't know, we wanna make the whole twenty-foot a pedestrian easement, but but those things are yeah, a little things along that. Uh, and I think, uh, on table eight, where you go from a place, go to a twenty to a twenty-four-foot asphalt, I think that's great. That's what you need. A twenty-foot two-way street doesn't work real well. Now, if it's a one-way street, that may be acceptable. But on a twenty-four-foot is what you need on a two-way street. Now, on a lane pavement width in a non-residential, you reduced it from a twenty-eight to a twenty-four. Now, my opinion, that should stay twenty-eight because you're in an area where you're dealing with more conver, commercial vehicles requiring greater turning radiuses and this sort of thing. So just leave that where it's at. Table nine. And again, I've been out of town. I know that I had, my notes are not together too well. Uh, on a place, you reduce the grade, maximum grade from twelve to ten. You know, why? It's a short street. My opinion, as a design engineer, you're gonna need twelve percent in a lot of cases. All the good land's already been developed. There's probably a problem with everything that's left. And slopes and grades are probably gonna be one of those things. Now, I know a lot of, a lot of communities will allow up to fifteen percent. But we've got the twelve, and I think that's good, and it probably should be left at that. Uh, I got two pages. Eighty-nine, an eighty-eight and eighty-nine both have table nine. There's not very much difference in them, but one of them has a cul-de-sac grade of six percent. I think that needs to be somehow stipulated that that is the actual turnaround and not the cul-de-sac that could be up to eight, eight hundred feet. And where you talk about the minimum grade at an intersection, it was six percent. That's not a good number, 'cause you're gonna wind up with offsets at an intersection. So you went to three. That's a big improvement. But if you look down underneath your pavement crown, it talks about the crown of the road being a tenth, two percent. I think that grade for that fifty-foot back from the edge of pavement should be equal to the crown of the street. And you're gonna get a smoother road, a smoother transition, and either a landing point or a spot to take off on that street. You know, those are a couple more little things. Section three-point-five, road construction specifications. Basically, what we're doing is we're here with that section. We're taking the Hendersonville Construction Manual out of our subdivision regulations, if I read that correctly. Uh, page ninety-nine, three-point-five, road construction specs, it said, road construction specifications. And all that is mic'd out shall be incorporated to the Tennessee Department of Transportation. But, uh, T-Dot's got great specs. I agree. But I was talking again about the curb. We need a construction manual that stipulates what we are looking for, for our streets and our subdivisions in Hendersonville. If you say use a T-Dot curb and section, curb and gutter section, they probably got fifteen. Which one you want me to use? I think when these documents are prepared, and I'm an engineer living in Timbuktu and coming to Hendersonville, and I'm gonna design a subdivision, zoning's in place, I should be able to go to the subdivision regulations. Then I should be able technically and meet your respects and go design that project all the way down the line. So these things need to be spelled out very specifically. And I, we were talking about Jim's cul-de-sacs up here a while ago. You know, that, that sign that I didn't know was in his zoning ordinance. I learned something tonight. But it needs to be out there and be stipulated. And it just, and you also need to be a note on that plan that the grading and the paving is to go to the property line. Builders, developers are notoriously known to stop it twenty feet short so we can work around. And invariably, a guy's gonna come build a house and he wants his driveway where you didn't extend the road. That, the sign, a few little odds and ends are things that need to be put in details somewhere, I think. Now, I we've got it. Appendices G in these regulations that deals with, with walls. And it makes good points about a wall being no more than ten feet and at least twice the distance away from the build, twice the height distance away from a structure. That's good. But I've seen numerous cases where we need some stipulation on how high that wall can be and how far it should be away from the road right-of-way. From a safety standpoint, and if it falls, we wanna make sure it falls on his property and not on our right-of-way. And that's for a wall that is built in place. And it also needs to stipulate a height distance from right-of-way from a pre-split rock wall. You know, some more little things. And I, I am a firm believer, I may be wrong, maybe somebody can convince me otherwise, but I think the Hendersonville City of Hendersonville Construction Manual should be a part of the subdivision regulations. And, uh, it could be added as an appendices, like some of these others. You know, that doesn't mean that it's, any of this is cast in stone. It can be changed. It's not a document that has to go to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, you know, for their approval. So, you know, it can still be a working in pro, in prog, in prog, you know, as you go. But a lot of these little things, I think, need to be cleaned up. And the construction manual needs to be an appendices to subdivision regulations. Now, there is not, there's not a provision in here for variance. But there is a provision for a deviation with the correct, if you meet certain design criterias, which, and that's okay. So, but we're still giving that engineer, that's the designer, and the city staff some flexibility with devi, deviations. But the little things that I've mentioned, I'd like to see incorporated, plus I'd like to see the construction manual being appendices to the subdivision regulations. Now, those are some quick notes I had. Now, I would, I'd been, like I say, I'd been out of town and was in a hurry. But I will be glad if the staff would like to sit down and give you, go through it and give you my opinions at a later time in date. I'm gonna shut up now. Talk to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Hasty. Um, other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Evans?
This is, uh, probably not the time or the place, so let me say that before I start. But, uh, Director Free and I have talked in the past about the, the Homeowners Association document, sample document that we give, uh, suggests to subdivisions to put in place. Uh, I think it ought to include, uh, some sort of language about our city ordinance, about vacation rentals and STRs. We get continuous, uh, pressure at the state legislature from VRBO, HomeAway and all the others to try to get the state to essentially void all the laws that local governments have on these things. And if that ever happens completely, which it very well could, at least the subdivisions have that, uh, stated in their, in their agreements before somebody puts one in and then it becomes incumbent on the city to spend four or five years trying to get rid of it. So, I don't know the, exactly how to go about that. Maybe it's just a matter of, of including it. But, uh, I really think it ought to be in there because we're gonna continue to have pressure on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I would just like to wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Evans on that point. That's all I had to say.
Director Free? Yeah, I, I think these are, uh, these are very good issues that have been brought up. I, I definitely appreciate, appreciate those. And I, I think we definitely would like, I think the planning staff, uh, along with the city engineer staff, would like to sit down with Mr. Hasty and kinda go through some of those things. Uh, I think what, I think what staff would like to do, uh, is probably just defer this at this point until our meeting in March. And then that'll give us opportunity to, uh, to revisit some of these things, uh, get with Mr. Hasty. Uh, and then also, if there's anything in the issues that you all were brought up, and if there's any additional issues, that'll give time for any of the planning commissioners to, to give me a call and let me know anything else, you know, to look at. Uh, and, uh, and then we can bring back a revised version. Uh, because, you know, really, we haven't, this is kind of a work session. And, uh, I know everybody's kinda had the document for several weeks. But, uh, you know, that's, we weren't looking that it had to be approved tonight. We'd like to definitely get it, get it done. We've been messing with it for a while. Uh, but, uh, the input from the planning commission is very important as a part of this. We're looking at it technically from a staff standpoint. And, and we've had staff changes and turnovers and, and things like this during this whole process that this occurred. And, uh, and, uh, so fresh eyes on it are definitely, are definitely welcome. And, uh, you know, we want a document that is pretty much, uh, where there's no confusion. And, and I agree with, uh, with what Commissioner Hasty was saying. I, I mean, I want the design professional to be able to take our zoning ordinance and take our subdivision regulations. And if that's all they had, uh, you know, they can, they can get that, get that taken care of. Because otherwise, if it's not clear, there's gonna be confusion, there's gonna be disagreement. We're gonna have design professionals constantly asking us, you know, little questions because of the lack of, of having that, having that clarity. So I think that's a, I think that's a very good thing. So from a staff standpoint, that's what I, I think I would, I would recommend, uh, for us to maybe try to bring this back in March. And we would do another public hearing, uh, to give the public an opportunity, uh, to comment as well. Do you wanna bring it back in March or do you wanna bring it back in? Probably March. Uh, we're doing Westlake in February, so that might, you know, uh, March may be a better meeting. Plus, it may take us a while, and I need to get with, I need to get with Public Works and, uh, the Public Works Director uh, on, on looking at the construction standard book that they have in Public Works. I know, I know there's a lot of things in there that are outdated that we don't even use. We use something else, but it's not in that. But, you know, um, see what the, see what the possibilities of, of juicing up that document to make it relative. You know, uh, where there's not stuff in there that we're not using. Uh, you know, see if that's, if that's possible. If that's not possible, go ahead and make changes where that maybe we can bring it back in March, approve it with the knowledge that, you know, once the construction standards are completed, we bring it back and we just adopt that as a part of the appendices. And then it's, then it's a part of, uh, it's a part of the document. So that, that would be a way to do it, so.
Thank you, Director Free. I'll make a motion that we defer this till March. If I can get a second on that, please?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Altizer. Lauren, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood? And Coker?
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you.
Annual meetings, so we'll have elections for officers tonight. Well, it's gonna take nominations from the floor on this. Uh, Director Free, I believe there are four positions that we elect. We elect a chairman, a vice chair, a secretary and a vice chair. Is that correct?
Vice secretary.
Vice secretary, sorry.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and it's my understanding that the vice secretary position is vacant right now, is what seems to everybody's recollection is on that.
I think. Oh, you're, you're the vice, I think you're the vice chair, not vice. You're the vice secretary.
Vice, vice.
Yeah.
Well, not to put you on the spot there, Commissioner Hasty, are you okay continuing in that position?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd make the nomination if we leave the whole slate of officers as they currently are.
We have a motion, and who was the second from? Commissioner Evans. Um, Lauren, will you call the roll on that, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans? Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Silkwood? And Coker?
Yes.
That's all eight.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two year-end report. And Director Free?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for another year. Thank you, thank you for all the officers for willing to serve one more year. This is, uh, each January, we, in addition to electing officers, uh, we also give just kind of a quick year-end report of, uh, of the activity of the, uh, of the planning commission uh, throughout, uh, throughout the previous year, which in this case would be, uh, twenty-twenty-two. And, um, we'll just go through some of the information. One of the things, you know, we've talked about this before are some of the numbers, uh, that we, um, uh, we look at. We look at, we count everything that we touch. So all the different items that we touch, that some of those things are done at the staff level. Other items, like the items that you had tonight, those come before you. Uh, in calculating all of that, uh, last year, uh, we had a total of a hundred and seventeen items that were items that were related to the planning commission and staff level things, uh, associated, uh, with things, with the, uh, with the planning commission. And this is a seven-point-three percent increase, uh, from, uh, the twenty-twenty-one totals. And actually, uh, as far as numbers, since two thousand and six, uh, two thousand and twenty-two is in the top six of, uh, of, as far as higher, higher number of things that have been handled. So actually, really, what the staff has experienced over the last, uh, year and a half, two years, uh, has been a substantially higher volume of things that have, that have been, that have been going on. And you can see those items, uh, uh, on the, uh, information that you have in your packet. Uh, six preliminary plats, thirty-six final plats, ten, uh, preliminary development plans, um, or amendments, uh, six final development plans or amendments, uh, two, uh, combined development plans, fifty-seven site plans. That's, that's a lot of site plans. And actually, surprisingly, no rezonings, uh, so, uh, during, during the last year. And so I wanted to hit, uh, I wanted to hit that information. Additionally, not included in these totals, uh, we handle, um, uh, use and, use and occupancy permits. That's things where you have a, uh, like you would have a dentist office that got approved of the site plan, got built. It has to have a use and occupancy. Uh, you've got a building where, uh, something used to be a shoe store, and now it's gonna be an ice cream, uh, uh, parlor or something. Uh, then that would need a use and occupancy. Also, larger, like townhomes, uh, those for the whole building, not each building, I think, but for groups of buildings, they get use of occupancies. And our use and occupancy in twenty-twenty-two was a total of three hundred and four. To compare this, uh, in the previous year, twenty-twenty-one, it was only two thirty-eight. To compare this, uh, in the previous year, twenty-twenty-one, it was only two thirty-eight, and in twenty-twenty, it was two twenty-eight. So the use and occupancies are very substantial. And what we're finding is, uh, some of those are townhomes that are being built out on, uh, out in derm farms. Uh, but there's been a huge uptick of commercial, uh, uh, businesses going into va- when something vacates. So we've had a lot of vacancies that have been sitting around for a while. And we've got all kinds of businesses that are going into, into those places. So that's, uh, that's very exciting. Uh, it's a, it's good, it's a good measure of the health of, uh, of our community. And that increase in use and occupancies is actually about twenty-five percent increase, uh, so you're looking at percentage-wise, uh, from the, uh, from the previous year. So that's just some of the information that I wanted to share on the, uh, on the year-end report. Uh, we, we, from a staff standpoint, we don't anticipate a higher level of activity next year. Uh, we look at it probably maintaining about where, where it is. And we're, we're basing that on the, um, pre-development meetings we have. And, um, here, uh, over the last couple of weeks, we haven't had any, but previously to that, at least two to three a week. Uh, we're having pre-development meetings with, um, projects that are looking to come, or, uh, businesses and, and different developments. So those will start bearing fruit in, you know, in the, in the following months. Uh, and they'll, they'll work their way, uh, to here. So that's kind of, that's what I have for the year-end report, and I can kind of go right into.
Absolutely.
Director comments. Uh, I've got just a couple of other things. If I can pull up this map right here. Um, JP, um, in our office is our GIS, um, um, staff member that makes all of our maps. And so, you know, we've talked about it before. One of the things that we're doing from a planning standpoint and an economic development standpoint with our new economic development person, Jay Ritterback, uh, we're, we're, we're mapping more things and we're creating a living database. And as a part of this, uh, uh, one of the things that we're able to do is we're able to go back through to two thousand and eighteen. So this map shows you all of the parcels since two thousand and eighteen that something that was related to the planning commission, or that number that I talked to you about, you know, and all the things we touched during the year, that, that is where all those things occurred. And then actually, um, uh, if you can go to the next one, this shows it for, for last year. So you can see all those darker areas in the maroon, uh, those are the areas that, uh, development, uh, different development approvals occurred. And then let's just go backwards, twenty-twenty-one, and then twenty-twenty, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and eighteen. This is very helpful because we all kind of know where development's happening. But being able to map that and have the data is, uh, is very important. One of the things a spur of this is, this is a part of a greater database that we're currently working on. And what we're doing is, uh, we're starting with the Westlake, um, plan area. You know, the Westlake boundaries of, uh, of that, of that plan. Uh, we are actually creating a super database where we're gonna have very specific information on commercial and industrial businesses that are located within that, and we're gonna be able to maintain that. And this is gonna be part of our effort, uh, to, to kind of blend planning and economic development where we know where everything's at, and then be able to tie this into financial data, property tax data, uh, um, tax data from, uh, sales tax receipts and things like that. Uh, and then be able to identify where things are going very well and look at opportunities of how we can make them even better. And then probably even more importantly, see where things are starting to fail in small areas and then assess what are some things that maybe we can do to, to prop those areas up, uh, you know, before they might, uh, fail far- farther. And so that's something that we're, uh, that we're doing, uh, with our mapping, and I just kind of wanted to show you, you know, show you this, uh, that we're, we're working on. So I really appreciate the efforts of, uh, of JP and, uh, and Jay in our, in our office that are, that are working on this. Uh, I, you know, I mentioned the Westlake plan. That is, I think, uh, today we got the final version. So I think tomorrow, we're gonna probably put that out, uh, on the, um, on the city website. And we'll get that information to you all as well. We'll send you an email. And then we're gonna be doing, uh, the postcards again to all the property owners that are within the boundary. You know, to let them, you know, go to the latest version of that. And then that'll be on the, uh, February Planning Commission meeting, uh, to, to discuss, to discuss that. Uh, so I think that's gonna be, that's gonna be very, very interesting. Um, and I appreciate.
There'll be a public hearing with that.
Yeah, there'll be a public hearing, and then people have an opportunity. And then we're gonna get it out to the public. You know, they'll have almost like three, three or four weeks that the public will be able to digest, you know, this, this latest version. It's not really a big, there's not a big difference between the first one and this other one. We're kind of cleaned it up a little bit uh, on some errors and things like that. Uh, but, uh, it'll be pretty much, pretty much the same as what the original was. We didn't wanna change it a whole, you know, a whole bunch, uh, because people are already kind of familiar with it, with the, uh, the previous version, uh, that we, uh, that we had. And additionally, I think everybody completed all their training, BZAN. Yep, so everybody on the Board of Zoning Appeals and everybody with the Planning Commission, everybody appro- uh, completed their full hours of required training. So I really appreciate that. And that's every, that's everything that I have, Mr. Chairman, but I can answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you, Director Free.
Yes.
Commissioner Evans?
Uh, the, the Neighborhood Network is absolutely on fire with speculation as to the teardown of the service station on the corner of Sanders Ferry Road and, and Thirty-One. Could we please confirm to the people who might watch this later on that that has nothing to do with Westlake?
Yeah. No, that, uh.
And if appropriate, do we know what it's, what they're doing?
Yeah, no, that's, uh, that's something, uh, with the private owners of that, or whatever's going on. We're not familiar with what's going on with that. That has, that has nothing to do with the city, uh, or the city's plans for Westlake. So at this point, we don't know. We probably will shortly. Uh, so we probably will know if there are plans, uh, for that site. Uh, we'll know those, I would, I would think, within the next few months.
But we don't know that at this point, and we haven't acted on anything there.
We haven't done.
Wouldn't believe the activity on that.
There, there has been where the gas station is, and then, you know, the parking that's south of it between the funeral home and the gas station, or what used to be the gas station. Uh, that property was consolidated. So all that property was consolidated about four, maybe three months ago. It started about five months ago, but I think it finished up maybe three months ago.
It was Wheeler Construction for years.
So, so that happened. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of different things that happen, you know, with the gas stations, and you've got different brands. And so things change all the time, but at this point, you know, the city really, we don't have anything to do with it at this point. We will with whatever ends up going, you know, going there. Uh, but it, it's definitely, definitely located within a key portion of the Westlake, uh, uh, plan area. Uh, but I don't, I don't think anything associated with what the plans are for Westlake, I don't know that that has anything to do with whatever business transactions have occurred in regard, and lease, le- different lease things have occurred with that, with that property. So, yeah, Mr. Green?
You're welcome.
And, uh, one, one good thing was, one good thing was, we, uh, um, asked for an extra ten-foot easement on the Sanders Ferry side. So, uh, we got the, uh, extra ten-foot easement for sidewalks or roadway for, for the Sanders Ferry side when they did that plat. So, and the owner agreed to that. So that was, that should be helpful in the future, hopefully.
You ask me? I quit.
With that, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Altizer. Can I get a second on that, please? Who was, did that come from Commissioner Martin? Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Martin, and we'll just do a roll call vote on that. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you all very much for your time.